I call it a 3:00 PM session of the December 19th, 2023 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to Order. Like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board specifically, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is a contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda item, matters presented by the public that will take up later in the meeting this evening. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first item of business consideration today is Agenda item number five. What is the items of consent? What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the items of consent.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent, Jennifer. Agenda item number six, a consideration of a resolution honoring Robert Clark, Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, a resolution for the board's consideration. Whereas, the practice of zoning helps Henry County balance the proper use of land in its borders with the desire of citizens to increase the value and function of their own property. And whereas, members of the Board of Zoning Appeals are appointed by the Circuit Court to interpret local ordinances and grant variances and special use permits when necessary to uphold that balance. And whereas, Robert Clark was first appointed to the Henry County Board of Zoning Appeals in September 1989 and stepped down from his position in October 2023 after 34 years of service. And whereas, Mr. Clark contributed significantly to the board through his leadership as chairman from September 1989 through October 2005 and is the last of the original appointees from the inception of zoning in Henry County. And whereas, the numerous zoning cases overseen by Mr. Clark reflect the changing landscape of Henry County and an immeasurable impact on the lives of our citizens. And whereas, public service must be more than doing a job efficiently and honestly, it must be a complete dedication to the people who are served. Now, therefore, be it resolved on this 19th day of December 2023 that the Henry County Board of Supervisors recognizes Mr. Robert Clark for his 34 years of complete dedication to the people of Henry County. Signed, Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors. What is the consideration of the board in regard to this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent. Before we do the presentation, I'm going to ask someone who has worked directly with the Board of Zoning Appeals, I'm going to ask Mr. Lyle if he would offer some comments.
Well, Mr. Chairman, as you might imagine, the Board of Zoning Appeals is frequently contentious and hotly contested. And I would say, in my time, I've been their lawyer since 2003. And even in the most prickly of circumstances, the most contentious of meetings, Mr. Clark is courteous and thoughtful and always lets our citizens have their full say and then tells them why he is making his decision, whether they agree with it or not. And he does that, and I think our citizens are best served when government is transparent and explains itself. And he has done that regularly for the 20 years that I've observed him, and I think we are better for it.
I agree. And it goes back a number of years before I was on the Henry County Board of Supervisors, which is, I'm finishing my 22nd year. Bob came to me and asked if I would consider serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals. And of course, you would have to be appointed by the court. And walking me through that step, I enjoyed my time on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Learned a lot about Henry County and a lot about the different land uses of it. And I would 100% agree with Mr. Lyle that everything has always been so professional, so kind and courteous to the citizens that even if they disagreed with the opinion, they did not leave in a disagreeable manner. So, Mr. Lyle, will you join me down front as we present this? Bob, would you join us?
Where are you going?
Well, those in the back have guns and they can go ahead and do what they want.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Our next agenda item is Agenda item number seven, consideration of a resolution honoring Linda Love, Commissioner of the Revenue. Mr. Bryant, I believe that you have that to offer the board for its consideration.
Yes, sir. Resolution of the Henry County Board of Supervisors says, whereas, Henry County Board of Supervisors believes that the quality of local government services are the basic building blocks that all citizens expect and deserve. And whereas, those citizens who devote themselves to public service makes a greater impact on their communities than they could ever know. And whereas, the Commission of Revenue is one of five local elected constitutional officers whose authority is especially conveyed in the Virginia constitutions. And whereas, Linda Love, who has served the Commission of Revenue in Henry County for 16 years, will be retiring after 33 years of service to the public. And whereas, Ms. Love began her career in Henry County as a tax clerk in 1990 and was promoted to the Deputy Commission of Revenue in 2005. And whereas, Ms. Love stepped up and served the orderly transition of office following the midterm retirement of Lucy Clark in 2007. And whereas, throughout her service to Henry County, Ms. Love has proudly served our constituents in a tireless effort to fairly and accurately access properties and taxes. Now, therefore, be it resolved on the 19th day of December 2023 that the Henry County Board of Supervisors recognizes Linda Love for her extemporeary services to the people of Henry County and congratulates her on a well-earned retirement. And it's signed, Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolu-
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent. Vice Chairman Bryant, will you and Ms. Buchanan present this on behalf of the board, please?
Yes, sir.
And Brandon, after some photos here, would you also allow some time for the staff that are here to gather in a photo as well?
Ms. Love, I would like to sit you with this resolution on behalf of the Henry County Board of Supervisors and probably also on behalf of the people that you work with in Henry County while you were here these 30 years. And we hope that you're in a tire, you enjoy your tire.
Thank you.
Okay, staff members, would you join Ms. Love and for photo, please?
May I? There's a couple of other things we need to come out of.
It's been my privilege and my honor to serve the people in this town. We have wonderful citizens in this town. They did the time to do, they worked well with you. All my staff have worked well. I am truly, truly blessed. And it's been my privilege and my honor to be with you.
That takes us to Agenda item number eight, a presentation of the FY 2023 audit from Cretel Jones and Associates. Mr. Wagner?
The county firm, Cretel Jones and Algron Professional Counsel, that's completed its annual audit, county account, so the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023. Ms. Kim Jackson, Cretel Jones and Algron, here for about an overview of the audit and answering my questions from the House.
Aye.
I know that you just got the audit report and the lot taken, but the financial section is the first part of the audit report and includes the independent audit report, which states the audit was performed in accordance with applicable auditing standards. Based on the audit procedures and unmodified opinion or clean opinion, is it open? Can you hear me? No. Okay. Was issued for the fiscal year 2023. Pages 1 through 8 are the Management's Discussion and Analysis section, which summarizes the financial results for the fiscal year. Pages 9 to 19 comprise the basic financial statements of the county. Pages 9 and 10 are for a full basis. For the balance sheet and statement of activities, these statements include your capital assets and long-term debt. Their full basis statements are required to be presented, but the county maintains its books on the modified or full basis, which is reflected on pages 11 through 13. Page 11 are the balance sheet of the governmental funds, which includes the general fund and the main operating fund for the county. On page 11, total fund balance of the general fund is approximately 106 million, an increase of 38 million from the prior fiscal year. On page 13, which is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, shows how that change is around. The increase was due primarily to the Commonwealth of Virginia reimbursement of approximately 19 million on the new adult detention center construction, 8 million in ARCA funds, and interest income of 2 million. Back on page 11, the unassigned portion of fund balance is approximately 38 million. This is the portion of fund balance that has not been assigned, committed, or restricted for a specific purpose. Unassigned fund balance at the end of the previous fiscal year was approximately 32 million, which results in an increase of 5.5 million. Pages 15 to 17 reflect the financial position and activities of the proprietary funds, which are the Marina Fund and the Self-Insurance Fund. The fund balance for the Self-Insurance Fund was 8.6 million, an increase of 1.2 from the previous fiscal year. Pages 18 to 19 of the fiduciary funds, these funds include the OPEB trust, the other post-employment benefits, and the custodial funds, which include the inmate fund held by the shared and the special welfare fund held by Social Services. Bulk of the report are pages 20 to 101, which are the footnotes to the financial statements. These are all of the required disclosures under county standards. I'll draw your attention to a few of them. Pages 42 to 46 are footnote 9, disclosures to county school, IDA, and social services After that, pages 46 to 48 are footnote 11, is the long-term debt, which reflects the borrowings for the new adult detention center and also the school debt. Page 50 or footnote 13 is related to a new accounting standard that was implemented during fiscal year 23, referred to as GASB 96 or subscription-based information technology implements, which are known as your contracts for certain vendor software. This is a mirror of GASB 87 that was implemented last year for leases. Page 53 has footnote 18, which is required disclosure that is discussed, the ongoing litigation. The only material litigation in fiscal year 23 was a litigation related to the city of Martinsville, Reversion, to a town which was dismissed during the fiscal year. Pages 54 to 98 are all the required disclosures related to the county's pension and other post-employment benefits. These tables are based on actuarial data and the results are reflected in the exhibits 1 and 2 for your school on a full basis financial statements. Pages 102 to 107 start your required self-insurement information, which begins with the detailed budget actual comparison schedule for the general fund revenues and expenditures. To compare your original budget, your final budget, and what was the actual results for the fiscal year. Expenditures did not exceed appropriations at the fund level for any governmental fund, nor were there any fund deficits for the fiscal year. Pages 1 of 8 to 111 are the same schedule for your other governmental funds. And then, 112 to 133 includes more required self-insurement data related to the pension and OPEB. Pages 134 to 141 reflects the special grants projects fund and school funds, financial position, and financial activity for the fiscal year. The schools are the largest cost center for the county, and the revenues and expenditures for it can be found on page 138. Page 142 to 146 includes the same data for the IDA and social services. After that are your custodial funds, financial activity. Then, pages 149 to 154 is your other information section, various financial data comparisons for the past 10 years, revenues, expenditures, assessments, tax levies, collections, and other data. Pages 155 to 166 is the compliance section. It includes auditor reports and opinions for the internal controls, compliance that remain of federal program, and compliance with the Commonwealth of Virginia laws, regulation, contracts, and grants. All of these were cleaned. Page 161 does this, 30 findings and 9 clients related to state compliance performance. Then, the report ends with the county's schedule of expenditures of federal awards and schedule of funding and investment costs. There were no material witnesses or significant deficiencies reported in relation to the federal funds expended by the county for the fiscal year. Any questions? But overall, unbalanced increase. The county got a clean report.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. Just in general, how would you describe the county's financial situation?
It's doing very well with a strong fund balance.
Okay. And you mentioned that there was 38 million in the unassigned fund balance. What is the recommended amount for Henry County in the unassigned fund balance?
There is no, like, standard amount, anybody.
And I know we've, have you mentioned that before, Dale, about a recommended amount?
So, this board adopted a financial policy several years ago as part of the financing for the new adult detention center. Their financial policy established parameters of what should be our minimum fund balance is based on a percentage of our annual operating budget.
And what would that minimum amount? And if you don't have it, just be nice to know that, just because I know she said we had 38 million in the unassigned fund account. Be nice to know what the recommended amount is.
Sure. I don't have that available, but I will defer to our Chief Financial Officer, Darryl Jones. He may have that, I think.
Okay.
The fund financial policy system should maintain 18% basically of total budgeted revenues. So, when you do the calculation on that, I think it comes to 20, the middle of the fiscal policy would be $24 million. So, our unassigned fund balance currently at the end of June 30 of 2023 exceeds the financial policy target amount by 14 million.
Okay.
And we can provide you exact numbers, sheet, by email or at the next meeting.
Okay. So, in essence, it's 14 million above what we're, we've kind of decided that we should have in that account at this time. Correct.
The minimum amount we need to maintain in the account.
So, we're doing really, really well with unassigned funds. So, if there were special projects or different things, we have funds available to do some different things.
We, you know, we've always hired, and this board has something actively involved forward, is a very conservative fiscal policy to ensure that we have a sound financial backing for our projects going forward so we can address economic activities when they come about. And then, even though it's not called that, you know, rainy day fund, so.
We got a lot of rainy days.
Most, several of the board members up here are very familiar with rainy days in our community and struggling to make payroll. I mean, get to the point where we're in a struggle to make payroll. So, that minimum financial balance is to make sure we don't get into those situations again. I will call to your attention, just beyond the scope of this, because this was as of June, June 2023, since that time, you have committed, you know, $1 million for press glass and their growth and new jobs that, you know, will come out of that uncommitted fund balance once we get to that point. And there's likely going to be, you know, additional requests related to Lot 2, the development of Commonwealth Crossing.
And you may not be able to specifically answer this, but I know you also said that the 38 million is a 5.5 million increase from last year. Are we expecting a similar increase at the end of this upcoming fiscal year of that 5.5 million in that unassigned fund?
I would say no, because we've been in a perfect storm with the CARES Act money and the ARCA money. We did recognize, I think, $8 billion of ARCA revenue this year 23 that will not repeat itself in the future. So, I would say highly unlikely that we would, that we would reach that increase again because we just had a perfect storm the last couple of years with CARES money and ARCA money, which aided basically us addressing a lot of our capital leaves that otherwise we would have had to been budgeting for from our local fund.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? With that, I will call for action on behalf of the board as far as the presentation and adopting of this audit as presented to us. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the comprehensive finance report.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent. Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine, we'll have a monthly report on delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer, Scott Brienstaff. Scott, welcome.
Good afternoon. This is a report for the end of November 2023. As of November 30th, we have collected 92.15% of the 22 personal property taxes. For the month, we collected $70,992. Real estate, as of November 30th, 2023, we have collected 95.93% of the 22 real estate taxes. We collected $55,984 during the month. Since January 1 of 2023, TACS has collected $1,074,475 for us. And so far in the month of December, we've had 13 stops collected. As you know, real estate bills are out on time and the deadline is passing December 5th, so we're moving on to that. We'll be doing, you know, delinquency work on the 2023 real estate, personal property, real estate bills. Y'all extended last board meeting. They'll be in the mail before the end of the month, and they have until February 5th, so all that is on schedule. And I believe we have another judicial and nonjudicial sale set up for sometime in January.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions with Mr. Bryant's staff? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 10, update from Martin's for Henry County Economic Development Corporation. We have with us Mark Heath. Mark, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. Had a short month, but a very busy month in December. Our Small Business Division conducted a nice small business Saturday that was held on November 25th. As you know, we provide $10 certificates for public dinner for participating restaurants. 600 were given out, 497 were redeemed at 21 separate restaurants and Jerry's Pizza for the third year in a row that the winners are. And you can see the restaurants that were, where people went and visited and took advantage of this. So, it's a successful event again. Valerie Harper does a great job running that. Valerie also conducted a site visit to Crown Holdings with Virginia Agribail Partnership, Shirley Dodson, who works in our region. They met with the plant manager and HR director. There are currently 141 hourly workers and 26 staff working two shifts 24/7 at Crown, making 8 million cans a day, if you can put your mind around that. And originally, the goal was to hire 126, so they've exceeded that and are very pleased and things are going well. And our marketing division will talk about the unemployment report in a second. Our staff assisted with a John Redd apartment opening. And to date, if my numbers are right, there are out of 39 apartments, 32 are already rented. Many of those are people, was Mr. Wagner there? In a meeting earlier today, people that, that work here but live somewhere else and they've moved back in Henry County, they wanted to do and work in the same place, which is really a great result. We did, staff did a presentation in the last couple of weeks with Virginia Agribail Partnership Board of Directors in Richmond. We were invited to come up and speak at their board meeting, and it was very well received. There was a lot of conversation about Commonwealth Crossing. They are very excited about us getting our grain project going and a lot of, just a lot of good publicity for the county. We have been selected, Henry County has, and specifically Lot 2, Commonwealth Crossing will be one of 15 in the nation that will be part of a new pilot program in terms of site marketing through the Site Selectors Guild, which is the most prominent site selection guild, a group of site selectors in the world. We're very excited about that, and it was, we were asked to take part in that, and it'll be a great marketing opportunity for Lot 2. Our tourism staff conducted seven visits. We've had bulk distribution to the visitor center at Appomattox and at Blue Ridge and Roanoke. Dick and Willie continues to have lots of folks taking advantage of it. The 10 days, or rather, 12 days of Christmas social media campaign just finished last Friday, and the winner has been selected. I can't recall the lady's name, but she will come in and will receive a lot of nice gifts, Henry County gifts and products for taking part in that social media campaign. Workforce development, Sarah Hages and other staff, Beth Marshall are writing an article in the Chambers Annual Magazine. This year, it will center on Commonwealth Crossing and press glass will be the focus of that. We'll talk about our tourism report in just a second, and the staff was involved, both at the ribbon cutting for school drive, they had to submit to the opening, which was a great event. If you look at the tourism numbers, they are out for 2022. These numbers lag the year. These companies, Virginia Agribail, Virginia, rather, Virginia Tourism Corporation, which is part of the EDP. Just some highlights from the year of '22. Tourism activity generated over $70 million locally in our economy. It produced more than 20 million in worker income and paychecks. It produced more than twenty million in worker income and paycheck, two-point-eight million in local taxes, and generated seven hundred and eighty-seven jobs in Henry County. From a tax standpoint, each of the twenty-seven thousand eight-hundred-one households in Martin's Land Henry County paid more than one hundred and seventy-six dollars less in taxes every year as a result of taxes generated by tourism. And on an average day, as you can see, there are more than seventy-six hundred dollars in local taxes generated and more than fifty-six thousand dollars paid in income and weekly paycheck. Really a great year. The next page, you can see the seventy million dollars, we, no funding intended, but we have recovered from COVID with respect to tourism. And you can see how, how we had to fall off to fifty million in 2020. With respect to the unemployment report, it continues to be strong, the numbers, a three-point-four for the county. And this, the number of employed in Henry County, twenty-four thousand one hundred twenty-six, is the largest since 2007. And the combined Martin's Land Henry County unemployment number of twenty-nine six sixty-two is the highest, also since 2007. I'll be happy to answer questions.
Anyone have any questions with Mark at this time? Mark, thank you. That takes us to financial items. Matters. Agenda item number eight-eleven, an award of contract resurfacing and lining of tennis courts for Parks and Rec. Mr. Wagner.
Parks and Recreation Director Roger Adams is asking the board to agree with a contract in the amount of fifty-three thousand six hundred and forty dollars to quality seal coating and sports services in Penhoop, Virginia. The contract will allow for the resurfacing and lining of the tennis courts at J.C. Park. Two of the four courts will be lined to include pickleball. Price is based on a cooperative contract from the University of Virginia. The project is funded partially through a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Harvest Foundation, as well as funds included in the fiscal year 2024 capital improvements plan budget.
Okay. The board has had an opportunity to review the background material on this. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award the contract to Quality Seal Coating and Sport Surface LLC in Penhoop, Virginia, for fifty-three thousand six hundred and forty dollars for the resurfacing and lining tennis court at the J.C. Park.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent. Jennifer. Eleven B, an additional appropriation referencing one percent sales tax fund for new construction and renovation for the school board. Mr. Wagner.
The school board is requesting an appropriation of two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand six hundred dollars from the one percent sales tax fund designated for new construction and renovation of schools. The school board intends to use the funds for architectural or engineering services related to the installation of elevators at Campbell Court, Drury Mason, and George Washington Carter Elementary Schools. And Dr. Blake Lewis and Dr. Vodens here, should you have questions?
Okay, the board also has background material on this as long, as well as the action taken by the school board as part of your background material. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the appropriation of two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand six hundred from the one percent sales tax fund for the new construction and renovation of the schools as requested by the school board.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent. Jennifer. Eleven C, an award of contract referencing replacement vehicle for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking to agree to a contract to RK Chevrolet Incorporated in Virginia Beach for the purchase of a 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe Special Service four-wheel-drive vehicle at a cost of fifty-eight thousand forty-six dollars. Funds for this purchase are included in the fiscal 2024 capital improvements plan budget. And Sheriff Davis is here, should you have any questions?
In regard to awarding of this contract, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a contract with RK Chevrolet in Virginia Beach for fifty-eight thousand forty-five dollars to purchase a Chevrolet Tahoe Special Service vehicle.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent. That takes us to agenda item number twelve, and we will ask our newly elected members, both Mr. Pruitt and Dr. Cobbler, to participate in this discussion as well, as far as a consideration of a date and time for the 2024 organizational meeting. Mr. Wagner, will you give us some background on this, please?
Yeah. So the board supervisors is required by your board members to have an organizational meeting on or soon after the first business day of the new year. During the organizational meeting, the board typically sets its meeting dates for the following that an upcoming year adopts its bylaws and elects a chairperson and a vice chairperson. I know one of the, in the past, we've done it the first business day after the meeting. I know this time, Mr. Pruitt has expressed concerns to me that he has an obligation on that first day, we would like for you all to consider a day in the next week, perhaps January 8th. Of course, staff will make it several days on the date and time.
Okay, now I won't be available on the 8th unless it's in the morning.
All right, how about the 9th?
That would work for me.
Does the 9th work for everyone?
Tuesday.
Are you looking at five o'clock as usual?
January, Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 9th.
Mr. Pruitt and Dr. Cobbler, does the 9th work for you all?
That is the day of the special election, but would you be using this room at all?
No.
The day works for you.
Works for you, five o'clock work?
Yeah.
Okay. So I will need that in the form of a motion from the current board members to set January 9th, five o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we set January 9th at 5:00 PM for the organizational meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? And it's five with one absent and the consent of the two newly elected. Thank you, Mr. Pruitt and Dr. Cobbler.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, it's going to be here?
Yes, here. And it should be relatively short.
Right.
With that, that takes us to informational items. I will begin by taking any comments from the board, beginning with Ms. Dillard.
Now, I just want to wish everybody happy holidays and want to welcome, you know, and we'll do this later, but Dr. Cobbler and Mr. Pruitt, look forward to working with you.
All right.
And may I say one other thing and want to congratulate Mr. Slaughter for the time that he's been on the board and all that he's done and all the comments and the positive that he's brought into, brought to Henry County through his role as a supervisor and appreciate you and, you know, wish you well with whatever you choose to do. And I know we will be looking for some SROs as well in case you're looking for a job.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bryant.
I can almost say ditto on that, on everything that he said. And I too enjoyed working so much with Tommy for the last fourteen years and I'm truly going to miss him. He's been a kind of a leader for me to follow. Matter of fact, all of you supervisors has been a leader for me to follow. But I'll miss you sincerely, Tommy, and hope that you have a good retirement from the board.
Thank you. Ms. Buchanan.
Well, I, definitely what they said, I've been working with Tommy for a number of years and have found him to be very professional and an asset to the board. We're certainly going to miss him here on the board and, but I know that he has other plans for the future that probably will be a lot more fun.
All right, what do you got to say about that, Mr. Slaughter?
I've enjoyed it. It's been trying at times, but it's all been good because I, I'm a very nosy person and I like to know what's going on. And this is one seat you can sit in and you can find out just about everything that's going on in Henry County. Some you want to know and some you don't. But, but I have enjoyed it. And probably for good Lord, it'd been a little bit better to me if with my help, you know, I wouldn't be doing this, but it comes that time, you've got to realize, you know, it's, it's time to hang it up. I know I did my gun belt and, and now's the time to, to hang up this seat. So I'll still be around and still be ear for, you know, somebody to want to call to... My daughter told me one time and said, "You're really slick," said you... I said, "Really, by the time it gets to us, people have got sense enough to know there ain't nothing we can do about it." And they just need a sound and board to bounce it off of. And that's all you got to do is hang on the other end of that line and listen to them for a while. And, and I tried to get pretty good at that while I was police officer. So, you know, that made a lot of difference in the way I looked at things, I think. So, but other than Bill White, I could never stand to listen to him because he always thought he was right. But anyway, it, it's been a good ride and I hope and pray the best for the rest of you as long as you hang in there and, and do and all. And I wish the two new people all luck in the world. It's, I mean, as we see from Pam's ramp, you know, and I told her that when she first come to me and said she wanted to run for supervisor. I said, "We've all got challenges, but you've got some real challenges." But I said, "I think they'll work with you and, and help you and, and I know you're smart enough." So I know I had one of the reporters to call me and want to know why I backed her. And I said, "Well, you look at her credentials and, you know, if you're not going to back somebody that's got a doctorate degree and, you know, some age enough to be a sensible person." I said, "You know, I don't know who you're going to back." So, and the first thing she told me is, "I'm very conservative." And that was the first thing I wanted to hear. So I think that's the reason we've got figures that we've got now. Because it was not that figure when I started out sixteen years ago, so, but we've managed to hold on, to hang in there. And even though some tough times, it's, you know, it's been, been challenging, but it's, it's been good. And I appreciate everybody.
Thank you, Tom. I don't know how I can follow that, but other than say, as with a lot of things with the media, Bill, you get last word on this, you know, in the media, so, you know, good luck with that. But, and that's almost like challenging the guys in the back because whether or not their pistols will fire accurately to the front, but, and they will. It's been a great time working together. And when you work with another supervisor that district basically touches your district, you have a lot of common things. People will call me for things that are in his district and vice versa. And the primary dividing line is, there really isn't a dividing line, so to speak. You answer the question regardless of where they live. And even though the, I guess, map dividing line is somewhat, the Smith River divides the Blackberry District from the Reed Creek District, but not in its entirety, but pretty much so. But I know that it's been an experience to talk about things up in the north end of Bassett that maybe was not part of your grounds, but you all think about the public service end of it. It's not only served City Police Department for a number of years, served on one of our, one of our boards, or maybe more than one of our boards. I know Clean Community, PSA, a number of different boards. You look at the length of service along with the civic clubs that Tommy's been involved with, you're, you're looking at a person that has dedicated themselves to community With that, all I can do is applaud.
I'd shared some stories with Tommy before the meeting, so I'll just leave it at thank you, Tommy, for your service and it's been a fine and privileged work with and for you. Thank you. A few other items if I can do. As you know, the government has had a special election to fill the 48th House of Delegates seat for January 9th. And as you can imagine, with the short turnaround time, it's created a lot of work for our election team, particularly since it's during the Christmas and New Year holidays. And unfortunately, there are no state funds to cover the cost of holding this special election. As it stands, Henry County will have to bear all the costs associated with, with it, which we anticipate to be around thirty-five thousand dollars. So with your permission, I am going to adjust our legislative agenda to ask the General Assembly to reimburse us for the cost of this special election. And I would, a motion would be appropriate if you would.
I'll make such motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent. Jennifer. Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Related to the state government, the governor is set through, proposed by any state budget tomorrow. And I'd kind of give us a view into what the government thinks should be in the budget as far as education fund, public safety, transportation, and others that we look forward to seeing that. As a reminder, county offices will close this meeting on Friday, December 22nd, and remain closed on Monday, December 25th in observance of the Christmas holiday. And we will also be closed on Monday, January 1st, 2024, in observance of the New Year's Day holiday. Our convenience centers will be closed on December 25th and January 1st. And then just one last thing, I want to give a shout out to all of our employees, both the county and PSA and school employees. Each year, our employees donate time, presents, food, and money to give need families and senior citizens in our community. So last weekend, a Santa, which is also known as our Director of Maintenance, Dustin Christian, and his elves of county employees delivered gifts and food boxes to eleven families. In addition to the gifts, each family received five boxes of food, a case of bottled water, and a pack of paper towels, and two packs of toilet paper. And I'm just very proud of the generous spirit of the county team and I applaud them for the work they do and the generous hearts that they have. So I want to bring that to your attention. That's all.
Thank you for mentioning that. Lot that goes on behind the scenes and I know that they're not doing it for a pat on the back, they're doing it out of the kindness and generosity of their heart. With that, that takes us to agenda item 14, if someone will cite a motion to go into closed meeting as allowed by the Code of Virginia.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into closed meeting under 2.23711A1 for discussion of appointees to the Industrial Development Authority, Parks and Recreation Board, Patrick and Henry Community College Board, and the West Piedmont Planning District Commission. 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters, and 2.23711A3 for discussion of the acquisition and disposal of real estate. 2.23711A5 for discussion of as yet unannounced industries, and 2.23711A30 for discussion of contract negotiations.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent. See you all at service in five minutes.
Thank you for this, Jim.
I want to close the meeting on a motion by Ms. Buchanan and a second by Mr. Slaughter. Mr. Mau, will you call the board, please?
Yes, sir. Board members, to the best of your knowledge, all the business matters lawfully attended from open meeting requirements in the Florida Virginia Section 2-3711 were heard, discussed, or considered in closed meeting. How do you vote? Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
We're going to take up a couple of things as far as board appointments and then we'll have some background material on another matter that Mr. Wagner will present to the have some background material on another matter that Mr. Wagner will present to us for the Parks and Rec Board from the Collinsville District. Mr. Bryant, I believe that you have an appointee for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would like to appoint Catherine Whitley of the Collinsville District to the Parks and Recreation Board. Her time's going to expire from June of 2025. Is that what it goes through? Or are we going to make it for three years from today's date?
She's filled an unexpired term.
She's she's filled an unexpired term, yes, sir. It will be 2025.
Right, okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent Jennifer. Mr. Slaughter, I believe that you have an appointee for the board's consideration contingent upon a ceremony that will take place tonight.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Dr. Pam Cobbler to replace me on the West Piedmont Planning District Commission starting January the 1st, 2024, and run for four years.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent Jennifer. Mr. Bryant, for the Patrick and Henry Community College Board, I think you may have a name for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir, I do. I'd like to appoint Tim Chitwood to the Patrick and Henry Community College Board. Expration date's going to be June the 30th of 2027.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent Jennifer. And that takes us to, I believe, some background material that you wish to share. Mr. Wagner?
So you have before you three contracts that relate to the construction of a huge speculative shell building of approximately 105,000 foot feet on Lot 2 of the Patriot Center industrial park. The three documents you have is the real estate contract that facilitates the transfer of approximately 20 acres of land on Lot 2 to Marlboro Development Team Incorporated. The second document is the development agreement that sets out the terms and conditions of the agreement where Marlboro Development Team will construct an approximately 105,000 square foot speculative shell building on Lot 2. Marlboro will be responsible for all costs related to its construction and will assist with marketing the building to prospective industries. Agreement obligates the IDA to share in the carrying costs for the building once it is constructed and until it is sold or leased to an industry. And the IDA will be responsible for 50% of the carrying cost and MDT will be responsible for 50% of the carrying cost. MDT is Marlboro Development Team. The Industrial Development Authority will approve these agreements today at his meeting at noon today. And the last document is an agreement between the Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation, the county, and the Industrial Development Authority where the EDC is committing to pay the IDA's share of the carrying cost annually as long as continues to receive funding from the Harvest Foundation that can be used for this purpose. Staff recommends you approve these three agreements. And motions are provided for consideration. Two motions.
As far as consideration of motions, Ms. Buchanan, I believe that you are prepared to offer those.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First motion is to approve the real estate contract and development agreement with the Marlboro Development Team for the construction of a speculative shell building on Lot 2 at the Patriot Center Industrial Park contingent upon approval by the board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent Jennifer. And another motion for our consideration, Ms. Buchanan.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to enter into a funding agreement with the Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation as it relates to the carrying costs of the shell building.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent Jennifer. Mr. Wagner, do you have any other items that we need to consider prior to a recess? Board members, do you have any other items? We will stand in recess until our 6:00 PM meeting, which will start promptly. I call the 6:00 PM session of the December 19, 2023 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order from our recess of the afternoon meeting. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors, remind you that if you want to address the board specifically at a regular meeting, you'll need to sign up seven days in advance of any of our meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, as part of all of our agendas, the public may address the board under the Agenda Item Matters Presented by the Public that will be taken up as Agenda Item 19 tonight. Again, welcome, everyone. I appreciate you coming out to participate in your local government. I realize we have a number of folks here tonight because we have those that are going to be sworn into office. It's an honorable thing and we will get to that shortly. I'd like to recognize that also joining us tonight, we have Vice Mayor Rawls from the City of Martinsville in the back. Thank you for joining us. And we have a designated person for an election, Eric Phillips. Eric will be running for the House of Delegates. And so again, thank you all for taking time out of your schedule to be here tonight as well. With that, that takes us to our first Agenda Item to Consider Tonight, and that's general highway matters. We have with us from BDOT, Lisa Hughes. Lisa?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a couple really brief things. Last month, I talked about our posting of a willingness to hold a public hearing on the Smart Scale project at Laurel Park, Dogwood Road, and those improvements. That period will expire December 22nd, which is coming up Friday, I believe it is. And once we get through that, then we'll proceed with the project and I'll make sure I keep you posted. And if you have any questions on it, please don't hesitate to let me know. Also, on the maintenance side, you'll see us working on the bypass, doing kind of winter things, mowing the side slopes and making those look nice for the year.
Does anyone have any items for Lisa at this time?
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 16, we'll conduct a public hearing on rezoning application, R-2319. Betty Lampkins and Paul Dillard. Mr. Wagner's going to give us some background material on this.
We have before you an application for rezoning R-2319. The property is located on the west side of Wedgedale Drive, approximately 500 feet north of the intersection with the April Hill Highway in Collinsville District. The property is shown on tax map number 43.488. The advocate is requesting the rezoning of approximately 1.9 acres from suburban residential District SR to mixed residential District MR. The advocate wishes to place a double-wide manufactured home on the property. And following the public hearing, both the planning commission and the planning staff recommend that the rezoning request be approved.
I will open a public hearing to take input on this at 6:03 PM. Is there anyone desiring to comment on this rezoning application? Is there anyone? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:03. Mr. Bryant, I believe this is in your district.
Yes, sir. I have no problems with rezoning this, so I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent Jennifer. Agenda Item Number 17, a consideration of a resolution honoring Francis Wade Circuit Court Clerk's Office. Ms. Buchanan, I believe that you have a resolution for the board's consideration.
I do, Mr. Chairman, and I'm happy to do this. Francis and I graduated together from George Washington Carver High School, so it's an honor to read this resolution on her behalf. Whereas the Henry County Board of Supervisors believes that upholding the rules of law is essential in maintaining the dignified quality of life that all citizens expect and deserve. And whereas those citizens who devote themselves to public service in the legal system make a more significant impact on the communities than they could ever know. And whereas one such citizen, Francis Wade, has served in the Henry County Circuit Court Clerk's Office for more than 40 years and will be retiring on December the 31st, 2023. And whereas Mrs. Wade has played a vital role in the operation of the Circuit Court Clerk's Office by documenting land records and issuing marriage licenses and passports. And whereas during her tenure, Mrs. Wade has been a source of institutional knowledge for her peers based on her experience as a microfilm clerk, a genealogist, a probate clerk, and in her role as the master chief deputy clerk. And whereas Mrs. Wade was instrumental in bringing innovation to the office through her efforts to digitize microfilm deeds. And whereas Mrs. Wade has earned recognition from the state with her appointment as records manager with the Library of Virginia as an expert in the preservation of circuit court records. And whereas Mrs. Wade has served the citizens and the Circuit Court Clerk's Office with grace, dignity, and professionalism throughout her career. Now therefore, be it resolved on this 19th day of December, 2023, that the Henry County Board of Supervisors recognizes Francis Wade for her exemplary service to the people of Henry County and congratulates her on a well-earned retirement. And this is signed Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent. Ms. Buchanan, on behalf of the board, if you will present that along with our Clerk of Court, Jennifer Ashworth, and Mrs. Wade, if you'll all come forward, please. And afterwards, we may get a photo shoot with any of your staff members that would like to join you, but let's let's do this first. That takes us to Agenda Item 18, swearing in for elected officials. We can't say enough about this, that those that have put themselves out to run for office and it not only is their name that they're putting out, but they're putting out the name of the family and friends and it's great to see family and friends joining them tonight in this time of recognition. I'm going to ask the board members if we'll find a place out there because they're actually going to be addressing us. I think we're going to turn the podium around so that it may properly be understood and heard by the audience members. So board members, if you'll join me, help somewhere meet the final seat or stand.
So I ask Circuit Court of Commerce Jennifer Ashworth, Commissioner of Collinsville, Chair President of Electoral Board, the Reap and Spots, if you can come forward to recognize the individuals elected on November 7th to address the oath of office.
Jennifer Rawls Ashworth was duly elected Clerk of Henry County Circuit Court for a term commencing January the 1st, 2024 and ending December the 31st, 2031. And Jennifer was sworn in last week. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Deborah Parsons Buchanan. This is certified that Deborah Parsons Buchanan was duly elected as a member of Board of Supervisors for Henry County Horse Pastor District for a term commencing January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2027. Thank you, Deborah.
If you raise your right hand. Do you, Deborah Parsons Buchanan, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Henry County Board of Supervisors representing the Horse Pastor District for a term of office commencing January 1st, 2024 and expiring December 31st, 2027, according to the best of your ability, so help you God. Congratulations.
Pamela C. Cobbler.
This is certified that Pamela C. Cobbler was duly elected as a member of Board of Supervisors for Henry County Reed Creek District for a term commencing January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2027. Congratulations.
Buchanan, if you will please raise your right hand. Do you, Pamela C. Cobbler, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Henry County Board of Supervisors representing the Reed Creek District for a term of office commencing January 1st, 2024 and expiring December 31st, 2027, according to the best of your ability, so help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Travis L. Pruitt. Travis L. Pruitt was duly elected member of Board of Supervisors for Henry County Reed Creek District for a term commencing January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2027. Congratulations. What else? Ms. Ridgeway.
Travis, if you raise your right hand. Do you, Travis L. Pruitt, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Henry County Board of Supervisors representing the Ridgeway District for a term of office commencing January 1, 2024 and expiring December 31st, 2027, according to the best of your ability, so help you God. Congratulations.
M. Andrew Nester was duly elected Henry County Commonwealth Attorney for a term commencing M. Andrew Nester was duly elected Henry County Commonwealth Attorney for a term commencing January the first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending December the third, two thousand twenty-seven. Congratulations.
Andrew, do you raise your right hand, please? Do you, M. Andrew Nester, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, excuse me, and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as a Commonwealth Attorney for Henry County for a term of office commencing January one, two thousand twenty-four, and expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, according to the best of your ability, so help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
D. Wayne Davis, Jr. was duly elected Sheriff of Henry County for a term commencing January the first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Congratulations.
Do you, D. Wayne Davis, Jr., solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as the Sheriff of Henry County for a term of office commencing January one, two thousand twenty-four, and expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, according to the best of your ability, so help you God.
I do.
Tiffany Renee Harrison was duly elected Henry County Commissioner of Revenue for a term commencing January the first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Congratulations.
Tiffany, if you'll raise your right hand, please? Do you, Tiffany Renee Harrison, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as the Commissioner of Revenue of Henry County for a term of office commencing January one, two thousand twenty-four, and expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, according to the best of your ability, so help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Scott B. Brunsfeld was duly elected Treasurer of Henry County for a term commencing January the first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Congratulations.
Do you, Scott B. Brunsfeld, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as the Treasurer of Henry County for a term of office commencing January one, two thousand twenty-four, and expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, according to the best of your ability, so help you God.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ellen M. Boone. This is to certify that Ellen M. Boone is hereby appointed to the Office of Member of the Henry County Electoral Board beginning on January the first, two thousand twenty-four, through December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Congratulations, Ellen.
Do you, Ellen M. Boone, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Henry County Electoral Board for a term of office commencing January one, two thousand twenty-four, and expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, according to the best of your ability, so help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Andrew L. Barker, Jr.
That takes us to agenda item nineteen, matters presented by the public. Do we have anyone here tonight wishing to address the board under matters presented by the public? Anyone seeing and hearing no indication as such? We're closing in on adjournment, but before we do that, we've got another recognition that we'd like to share with the entire audience tonight, and that is a retiring board member that we have here, Mr. Thomas Slaughter. This afternoon, board members had an opportunity to comment, and I wouldn't dare try to retrace the words that were said, but nothing but kindness of serving with someone for sixteen years on the Board of Supervisors. He served on the West Piedmont Planning District Commission for sixteen years. He retired from the Martinsville City Police Department. He served on the Clean Community Commission. He served on the PSA. He has been an active member of numerous clubs and affiliation, and a very active member of Philadelle Methodist Church. And we want to show a small token of our appreciation, and it is not measurable against the amount of time and/or effort that you've put forth, but we do want to do that in a moment, but before we do that, we'd like to see if you want to offer any comments. And that's before I call your family up, too.
I guess I said about all I need to say or whatever, but it is more the public here. I've enjoyed serving, as I told them earlier. I'm a nosy person, and this is somewhere you can find out what's going on. So I have enjoyed my time on the board. There've been ups and downs, and thank God we didn't go through anything like we did a few years before I got on the board, but we have been through some rough times as far as financially and stuff. It's been enjoyable. I enjoy, I guess the pandemic is the one thing that I hate the most about it because I enjoyed getting out and going around and talking to people. And that kind of put a real damper on that, so we haven't been able to get out. I hope none of you take it personally that we don't want to be out there, but we went through that time period there that, you know, nobody really wanted you to come see them. So we didn't do it for their sake and our sake, so, but hopefully things are changing and things are going to get back to like they used to be, the time we all dream about things changing and going back to like they used to be. But anyway, this is a great county, a lot of good people here. I have enjoyed working for the city and being on the board here. That's one of the real reasons I run for it, the Board of Supervisors start with, is I didn't think the county and the city was getting along like this year. And I had worked twenty-five, well, almost thirty-five years, public works and police department both for the city, and I thought maybe they were giving, but then after I got on the Board of Supervisors, I found out there were some things went on that not everybody knew about. So, but anyway, I was wanting to see the county and the city get along. As I always told them, I always lived in the county and I always worked for the city. My dad worked for the city. City money educated me and sent me to school and raised me and fed me, and that was a chore sometimes. So, but anyway, I think the working relation, I hope what we've been through the last year or two has really changed things, and hopefully the city's got some folks back in there in places that they need to be, that they're really glad to be city employees or city residents, and that they're going to want to keep it that way and keep it like it has been and like it always will should be. But anyway, I just want to say thank you for the time you've given me on the PSA board, the Clean Community Board, where we was out here on the side of the road picking up trash or whatever, you know. It was just enjoyable, other than when cars passed you and they got down the road a hundred feet and they throw it out a can or something, you know, and you realize you didn't have your gun on your side. Because I think I eliminated some winters when I seen them doing that, so, but I guess littering is something I don't want to get on. We'll be here all night. But anyway, thank you all. Thank you for coming and ask for your support with Pam and all the rest of the board members because Lord knows they need it most of the time. So, thank you all.
We're going to do a short presentation down front. I'll ask all the board members and staff to join, and along with family members, if you will join us at the same time. And then we're going to call the board back up and let Mr. Slaughter make one more motion. And we know what that one will be. Mr. Slaughter has also been board representative for fifteen out of sixteen years, and we do appreciate that, that we do have county representatives there. Come on up here.
And I get to turn the end of one item that I do not like. When I first went over and printed our copies and brought them to us, and I love that stuff. We had computers, I'm way behind.
So we should have been sending salary money to one. Step up here, the board members, you will come up here. I'm a little taller, so we're going to keep presenting. Don't get in like you're laughing, Joe.
Do you, Mr. Slaughter, please swear as our sincere appreciation for your dedication towards the board. You have always provided a solid foundation for the board. Do you appreciate?
Thank you. And as I said earlier, no one was elected to all this and doing well without support of the panel members. Panel members, thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you for loaning us time for the last sixteen years. While we're assembling back here briefly, some of the items that are in that basket, you would recognize easily the names that have contributed to it. Hamlet Vineyards, Cocoa Trails, I think the historical center donated some things. We appreciate so much those that wanted it to truly be a part of Henry County, recognizing Mr. Slaughter's retirement. Mr. Wagner, do you have others to add that I've certainly forgotten?
I think you hit the major ones.
Okay. With that, that takes us to agenda, excuse me, agenda item number twenty, and I will accept the motion only for Mr. Slaughter on this.
So moved.
For what?
Adjournment. Most of the time, you say the adjournment, I just have to say.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent. Thank you all for coming tonight. I know that there are anxious folks wanting some photo ops afterwards with family and friends, and again, congratulations to each and every one of you that have been elected by constituents in your respective areas to your office of service. Again, everyone have a Merry Christmas and a safe holiday.